There have been meetings when we wish we'd had. I don't think that'll be the case tonight, but I'd like to call our town hall meeting to order. We want to welcome you all. I was afraid maybe the rain was going to keep a few people away and maybe it has, or maybe we did a good job on the regulations. I hope it's the latter, but anyway.
They can't get here because every road is closed.
The purpose of the town hall meeting is to gather information from the public to help the commission formulate recommendations. In order to ensure a fair and orderly meeting where everyone can participate, the commission requests that you act respectfully to everyone in attendance and follow the meeting procedures. Speakers must speak from the podium and write and state their name for the record. Second comments will not be permitted until every person has had the opportunity to speak for the first time, and comments should be concise, not unnecessarily repetitive. The chairperson reserves the right to establish a time limit of four minutes per speaker. The designation of a spokesperson for groups sharing a common point of view is encouraged. Before we start the roll call, I'd just like to say we want to keep it a conversation this evening, and we want to hear what you think the commission and the department have done right as well as wrong in these regulations.
Do you want to set a time limit based on the number of attendees?
Yes, and we will set the time limit.
Of four minutes.
Of four minutes.
Dan Bryan.
Here.
Myron Minehutter. Chad Gerhart.
Here.
Jeanette Johnson.
Here.
Rosa Cavazos.
Here.
Terry Robinson. With four members present, there is a quorum.
Thank you. All right, we will begin the discussion. Whoever would like to start speaking.
I'll do a little introduction first, yeah, just to kind of get us to where we're at today. As you are aware, we're here today for a town hall on solar regulations. If you recall, we've been working on this for very, more intensely the last year, although this topic of solar regulations has really been on our minds and on our agendas for the last couple of years. We started off in June of twenty, actually, it's been several years. June of twenty-two, we considered two small solar farms. And at that point, it was brought up that it would be helpful to have some regulations to guide us if and when additional solar farms came in front of us. At some point after that, there was discussion of a moratorium on wind and solar. And as that proceeded forward, we had some speakers come in and talk to us about the pros and the cons of both wind and solar. We decided that the topics are, while similar, quite different. And so we separated them into two different categories and did move forward with a ban on wind, which was considered here by the Planning Commission and then by the Board of County Commissioners in 2024. Yeah, just a little over a year ago. And at the same time, we then moved forward with a moratorium on solar. I think that everybody felt that we weren't ready to say that we didn't want solar, and so we wanted to have some additional time to consider that. And then even after that moratorium went into place, there has been, you know, we've had meetings and discussions about what it looks like for Shawnee County. And at this point, we have decided, or initially decided, that it seems as though we are interested in, you know, considering and having regulations that allow for solar, but wanting to, you know, limit that, but at the same time, allow for some flexibility and not onerously overregulate and not allow for that flexibility if and when a topic does come in front of us. Also, to this day, we don't have any pending applications for solar farms. You know, occasionally, we'll get an inquiry about where we're at with things, but we don't have anything pending at this point in time. So what you have in front of you, as you recall, are the draft regulations that we've discussed at various meetings. Just so the audience here is aware, we have had discussions on these, different work sessions throughout our monthly meetings. We've made recommendations, we've made changes. I took those and put them all together. I created what I thought was what you wanted, and you guys looked at those and discussed them. And then we got to the point where you, as the Planning Commission, said, okay, I think that we're ready to move this forward and have some topics in discussion on these regulations as a whole. We did, after that, send it out to various entities, fire districts, cities, gave them the opportunity to look at it and see if they had comments or questions. I have received some feedback on the regulations from several. And so at some point, we'll want to talk about those and see if there are additional changes that we need to make to the regulations. But we felt like the next step should probably be a town hall meeting where we allowed the public to come talk to us and tell us what they thought about it. I don't want to spend a lot of time changing things and then have someone say something revolutionary that you want to consider and then have to change them again. So let's, you know, have the public tell us what we think, what they think, give some input, ask questions. As Jeanette said, I want this to be formal but informal. I want to allow for questions and discussion. Don't feel like this is like a public hearing where they're not allowed to ask you a question and you're not allowed to respond, and vice versa. If you have a question for any of them, please feel free to ask that. I think that with the size of the group, we have some flexibility with how we handle things. And, you know, let's have a good amount of discussion so that we feel like we've had some consideration. So we will pull up the regulations on the screen so that we can see them. If anybody wants to pinpoint something in particular, we can pull that specific regulation up. Is there, or are there, any questions from the Planning Commission for me? Okay, so if you want to open for comment.
Ready to go, so anyone that would like to make some comments?
Yes, make sure and sign in. There are sheets up there. You're okay. I'm trying to still pull up the regulations. I want to make sure that I had the most recent copy up. And I do have big red draft written across it, so excuse that, but.
Okay, I'm not related to Jeanette. I'm Richard Johnson. Okay, my name's Richard Johnson. I live at thirty-five, thirty-six Hudson Road, Silver Lake, Kansas. It's been a year since the last meeting on solar, and we have earned a lot. August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, USDA Secretary Rawlins blocked taxes, tax dollars for solar, deemed it unreliable and a waste of land. Ten states have followed. In twenty twenty-five, twenty-two solar companies have filed for bankruptcy. August first of twenty twenty-five, Evergy got approved for two gas electric generators. Apparently, the solar and wind isn't working like they promised. They tell us the maximum potential of energy that can be created, but they omit the part about dependability on the weather. Once the heat on solar panels goes above seventy-seven degrees Fahrenheit, the efficiency decreases as the hotter it gets. This creates a problem with voltage. September twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-five, discussions have already indicated that nuclear plants are in the future. Now, this is a yearly thing, but in solar, it is dependent on the weather. According to the Weather and Science Facts, forty to seventy percent of Kansas skies are partly cloudy. Topeka showed forty percent of clouds. We had a lot of days hotter than seventy-seven degrees with humidity averaging over sixty-seven percent. Citizens have learned the negative side of solar. This year, residents have blocked a huge site in Missouri, and Jackson County, Kansas, is still fighting a proposed eight-square-mile solar farm. Solar propaganda is careful about not telling you how many square miles of land is covered by solar farms. They prefer to mention the potential output of electricity through megawatts and acres. Two years ago, I did some math. It takes one to five acres to produce a megawatt with the new panels. Older panels were five to ten acres. Older solar farms are not replacing panels with new product. I used five acres and then totaled the number of megawatts produced by the major solar farms from Kansas West. My math showed over a thousand square miles of land covered by solar panels. Solar farms disrupt the habitat. Hundred-and-fifty-thousand-acre solar farm in California's desert has killed the ecosystem. I have a printout here I can give you. In twenty twenty-five, California's $2.2 million farm shut down. They had brownouts from the get-go when they started that, and then they had to add more money to a nuclear plant in California to take up the load. What's seldom mentioned is the aquatic runoff. Consider the size of the storm drains it takes to handle the water that runs off of Gage Center parking lot in the bowling alley. You can drive through that drainage thing underneath the ground there. I've done it. I didn't drive, I took a bicycle. But that's a lot of water runoff that we have to be considered. And if you have areas that have been compromised in the solar farms that goes into the ground and that can leach into waterways. And where am I at here? Okay, the solar panels have damaged, like I said, they bleed a lot of toxic substances. I mentioned heat and humidity earlier. The two main causes of solar farm fires is poor maintenance and humidity. Here's a picture, I have a picture here of a solar farm that's just over the hill from me, it's twenty acres. I call it a solar tender factory. If you look at it, grass is growing up all around it. This grass is touching the solar panels, and that's showing that there's no maintenance. And I'm surprised that there's any electricity coming from there. We only see the production of CO2 and other greenhouse gases. Things to consider. Lightning strikes remove CO2 and methane gas from the air. It makes it.
Time.
Wow, okay. All right.
You can allow additional time.
How much more do you have to say, since we don't have too many?
Give me thirty seconds?
Okay.
Okay, I'll look at corn. Corn, we spent ninety-five-point-one million acres of corn. Corn absorbs eleven tons of CO2 per acre. We did the same thing with soybeans, eighty-three-point-four million acres. Okay, over two to four thousand pounds of CO2 is removed from the air by these plants. We eat thirty-eight-point-five million acres, and it takes sixteen thousand pounds from there. So all of this stuff we're talking about greenhouse gases, they don't ever talk about the part where nature absorbs it. The other problem that we have is massive rains in California, Texas, Arizona, Texas especially. We can look at Dubai and we look at Abu Dhabi, major, major storms. And this has been caused by the fact that these big heat panels from these massive solar farms is affecting our weather. And I have document here that I can link to that shows you, and they're using the Sahara as an example. But thank you for your time and thank you for the extension. I appreciate that.
Can I ask a question?
And that's a doodle there. You don't have to worry about it.
Rosa has a question for you, Mr. Johnson.
I have a question. You mentioned that there was a solar panel over near your, near your property?
Yes.
Where?
I'm at Thirty-Fifth and Hudson.
Okay.
Well, I'm thirty-five, thirty-six Hudson. If you go to Thirty-Fifth and Hudson and you turn and you go east on the dirt road, you pop up over there, there's a substation there.
Okay.
Across from that, it's all kind of fenced in, but you can, I have a picture of it, and I even have it on my cell phone.
Does anyone know how big that area is?
I just measured it. It's like twelve and a half acres.
No, it wasn't quite that. I think it was an eleven acre.
Well, we're dividing it between there and Auburn Road.
Yeah, the Auburn Road one was fourteen or fifteen acres.
The whole site down is probably twenty acres, and there's like eleven acres of solar. That's what you would say with that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for your question.
Yeah.
That's what I get for doing dishes.
Growing up tall. Oh, let me actually comment to that. Mr. Johnson, if you feel like there are maintenance issues that need to be addressed with the existing solar farm with grass, we don't go out and see inspections, but send us a message on that, and we will follow up and have someone drive by and see if there's maintenance that needs to be done, because that should fall underneath their conditional use permit.
Yeah, I was here when that was approved.
Yeah.
And I never thought about contacting you. It's been that way all summer.
Okay, yeah, send us an email and we can send somebody out to check it out.
My name is Vicki Arnett, and I'm the co-chair of the League Women Voters of Topeka Shawnee County Climate Committee. The League adopted a position on climate and energy use in April twenty twenty-four, which states in part, "The League supports the development of energy sources which allow for the reduction of the use of fossil fuels." We would like to thank the Planning Commission for their work in developing the draft solar energy system regulations and for providing a forum for public input. We do, however, find that several of the proposed regulations will discourage the development of larger-scale solar installations in Shawnee County. These restrictions include limiting projects to two-hundred-and-forty acres, requiring setbacks of five hundred feet, and prohibitions on battery storage. Large-scale solar projects at a minimum require approximately a thousand acres. The Douglas County project, they permit for a thousand acres. I think the project is less than that. And Johnson County allows for up to two thousand acres. Johnson County regulations seem set to attract data center proposals and to take advantage of cost savings to all classes of ratepayers through the recently proposed Kansas Corporation Commission Clean Energy Choice Rider. Solar industry developers will find the proposed five-hundred-foot setback restriction so burdensome, it will take Shawnee County out of the competition for future development. It also potentially restricts land odor choices regarding property rights. No large-scale solar installations will be built in an area which prohibits onsite battery storage. Although we recognize the potential impact on rural fire districts, the Planning Commission should consider the continual advancement in battery storage safety. In addition, through the conditional use and permitting process, the commission may require the developer to be responsible for fire district training, the purchase of appropriate equipment to fight potential battery fires, and emergency management cost-sharing arrangements with the county. The League of Women Voters of Topeka Shawnee County requests the Planning Commission consider increasing the size of the projects to no less than a thousand acres, decreasing the setback requirements to no more than one hundred feet, and reconsider the emergency management needs relative to battery storage. Thank you for your time and for your service on the Planning Commission.
The commission have any questions or comments?
Vicki, I had one, sorry. Vicki, how many people do you represent in the League of Topeka?
It's about two-hundred-and-fifteen members at this point.
Thank you.
I would also say that we discussed the battery storage part of it quite a bit, and we decided that at this stage, until Shawnee County has a broader discussion about battery storage, that we wanted to keep that eliminated from the solar farm regulations. We felt like, for now, this would allow solar to move forward, and we could then look at battery storage as a whole and then come back and amend it if we decided that battery storage was appropriate for Shawnee County. You know, independent standalone battery storage is maybe even more popular than battery storage on a solar farm. I don't know the answer to that, but, you know, it in and of itself has a need for regulations or consideration because there are a lot of things to consider with battery storage. So that was something that we did discuss.
So, and I'm going to assume that you recognize that that does limit large-scale solar development to an area near distribution lines.
Correct, correct.
Which further limits development in the county.
Correct.
Thank you.
We also have a provision in here that the governing body or the Board of County Commissioners can override any of these regulations. If somebody came and wanted something that was five hundred acres, you know, they would have that ability to.
Our favor is they hold time when they see the restrictions.
I see. Yes.
I think kind of to that end, though, like, no matter how you regulate then, it has the potential to prevent someone from wanting to, and again, I'm going to point out that nobody has reached out to us. And so we're not trying to set a regulation, you know, some counties are in a scenario where they're trying to create regulations under the pressure of a project that's in front of them. And we don't have that pressure, although we do get contacted all the time and asked questions. So I don't think that that's the case. I don't think that someone would look at our regulations and just say, we're not going to consider it. They typically still reach out and ask us those questions. But I also think that if you are going to take that, attitude's not the right word, but if we take that perspective, then really, we shouldn't regulate them at all because any limitation is going to prevent someone from contacting us. I think we have to do what's best for Shawnee County in terms of the land and what we've got and how we can work it. And then with the provisions of allowing the governing body to consider other options, if the right topic came in front of us, then I think that that gives us some flexibility.
Hi, my name's Don Taylor. I'm a licensed professional engineer. For thirty years, I worked in the system planning department at the company formerly known as Kansas Power and Light. And in the following eight years, I worked in transmission operations. Some of the comments have already been made. I'm not going to repeat them. Some of the comments have already been made. I'm not going to repeat them. One of the things, and it's on page two, number six, is the thing that says, "All onsite communications, power collection, yada, yada, yada will be underground. Utility or power lines or transmissions are permitted only within public rights of way or easements." No. Public rights of way are things like roads. In a company like a utility, they have private rights of way. You buy them and you get to go use them. And so like if you wanted to connect a two hundred and forty acre wind farm to an Evergy line, it's not going to go on any distribution line. It will have to be a transmission line. And that's going to be a private right of way that you're going to be connecting to. And inside my project area, it's all fair game. I can build wires to go and get connected to it. So number six is problematic.
Are you speaking specifically to the right of way part or just the easements?
The, the fact that it says within public rights of way or easements.
Right. And so easements would consider any type of easement. If there was, um, agreements with the landowners, they could enter into those easements. But the, the concept being the overhead transmission lines or electrical poles need to be within public rights of way. Anything within an easement would have to be duly recorded and noted and agreed upon by the owners of that, that land.
If the land is leased, if I buy two hundred and forty acres, there's no lease involved. I'm free to do whatever I want. Correct?
But utility power, so utility and power lines and transmission lines, what we're, the, the differentiation would be, you can have the collection lines, the interconnections within a project area. Those can be installed underground anywhere. What we're talking about with the transmission lines would be those lines that are connecting them to the, the, the grid or the substation. So those would have to be within rights of way or easements to allow those to happen. There's a difference between the, the transmission lines versus other sorts of connection lines.
Our, I guess our distinction is between a public right of way, which I consider like roads. Those are public rights of way. Or a private right of way, like what a usual transmission line runs down.
Right. So the ones that are in the, the public rights of way can be above ground. All others would need to be underground.
I understand. Okay. It's problematic because sooner or later, you're going to have to come up out of the ground to get to whatever it is you're going to connect to. Number nine essentially says you can't keep spare parts on the site. You know, there are spare parts on substation sites all over the place. It's kind of like one fails, you go out, replace the panel, take the other one, it goes back to the manufacturer or something. That looks problematic. There are spare parts available that are readily available and it should be allowed to have my little room with a stash of extra panels hooked in there. So the number nine essentially says you can't keep spare parts, looks problematic. On page three, it said the executed power purchase agreement or interconnection agreement. If you have a utility scale generating project, there is only one place you're going to go to get an interconnection agreement, and that is the Southwest Power Pool in Little Rock, Arkansas, by definition, under the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, because it will be so big. You're going to be having like a hundred megawatts in two hundred and forty acres. And so some, there, there might be some confusion on how those agreements, those legal agreements are going to work. But I'm going to tell you, Southwest Power Pool is going to be the one and only company that determines whether or not you can build it and connect it in a generation interconnection process queue.
What about, um, like we have our Free State Electric Company here that's separate, has their own grid that they, like, so they have the two solar farms that they've connected to their specific grid. So are you saying that other types of grids or substations or providers, like we, we're only looking at the, the Power Pool?
Rural electric cooperatives live in a kind of a different world. Not knowing how big those little wind farms are, they may have hooked it into a thirty-four and a half KV transmission line. For them, that's a transmission line, but they don't have like a hundred and fifteen KV transmission lines like Evergy or the people out west at Sunflower. So it's a different model for them.
How would you change the wording?
On which piece?
The, this last.
Executed power purchase.
Yeah, the, the power purchase agreement.
I'm not real sure at this point. I know that you would have to have an agreement with somebody to take the power. Unless I am a company that built this wind farm and I'm only going to sell it into the open market, which in fact is run by Southwest Power Pool in a fourteen state area. You have a power generation and you want to offer it into the market for anybody to buy it? There is a process that's just say, here's my power. I'm going to offer it at this price. And if they take it, it gets dispatched. I'll have to think on how to modify that to make it look right, but, um, generation doesn't just get to go and pump power into the grid. Southwest Power Pool.
Well, I guess the, the, my question would be, so if you, I mean, what is kind of the alternative? If you aren't connecting, I mean, you can have battery storage, but even if you have battery storage, at some point that has to connect somewhere. Or if you, so what's the alternative to having a power purchase agreement or interconnection agreement? If it's not going into the grid, where else would it be going?
Well, a power purchase agreement ends up, and I'm going to pick on somebody that maybe everybody here knows about, over in downtown Lawrence is a hydro plant. And there is a power purchase agreement for all the electricity from Bowersock Mills and Power to go to Unified Government, City of Kansas City, Kansas, Board of Public Utilities. They have a power purchase agreement to take the power that they generate in Lawrence and it magically gets into the grid. Um, and they have a, a dedicated distribution line that goes to the substation. They're at Mass, at, um, Sixth Street at the end of the bridge. And that power gets routed and BPU buys it, Bowersock sells it. Those are how the power purchase agreements work. And that, that stands outside of the integrated market.
Well, so I guess, I guess then my question is, is how does, why would we need to change the language here? Because we're not saying that it has to be with the grid. So if there is a situation where a solar farm is being requested, but yet whatever reason, there's a, a place to connect it and have a power purchase agreement with Unified Government, like this doesn't limit who that agreement is. I agree that in most scenarios, it's going to be with the Southwest Power Pool. And that's kind of the anticipation that we have in looking at this, but it doesn't really limit it. So I'd be, I mean, if you have other suggestions or?
It had and/or. And if our purchase agreement takes things and moves them aside, because now I have a bilateral agreement. I'm going to produce it. You're going to buy it. We agree on the price. Nobody else gets involved.
Right. I s- I guess I still don't understand where it's wrong.
Tracking more with you. I mean, we all.
Yeah. I mean, if you have recommended language of how it should be, would be better, we're, you know, send that along to us and we'll look at it and consider it. I just, I guess I haven't heard yet why this is wrong. And, you know, we take these languages, we look at other regulations that have been crafted and utilized and it's really quite frequent that you see language similar to this. So I'm not saying that you're not correct. I would just be intrigued on knowing what it is that you are thinking. So, okay.
Large-scale installations, Southwest Power Pool is going to be involved. So you are going to ask a question?
No, I just would suggest that if you think on it and you come up with something, you let us know.
I will. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would care to make a comment?
Hi, I'm Diane, Indiana. And first of all, I just wanted to thank you for prohibiting battery storage. If you have a question about that, you might want to look up Moss Landing in California, where the battery storage caught on fire and burned for a long time, weeks, and, um, contaminated a lot of the area. Uh, I read one article where it said twenty-seven miles from that, uh, from that battery storage was actually where it all contaminated. You know, people had to get out of their houses, uh, couldn't stay there. So, uh, and the battery storages do have quite a, quite a reputation for catching on fire. So we certainly don't want that here in our county. So I'm going to skip around just a little bit. I'd like to read you just a really quick, um, quote here. It says, "Fire is a major hidden danger for solar farms. Fire risks cannot be totally engineered out. As a result of fire, wind, and hail potential exposures, insurance companies will likely start increasing rates or just dropping insurance for properties boarding or bordering or near solar fields." And that entire statement came from the Insurance Business Magazine dot com. Risk Management News, Gabriel Olano of Fire Trace International. Uh, and it was published September eighth of twenty twenty-two. So, um, fire is a concern. Just a little bit of information. I was looking at the setbacks and, um, I was also looking at the, um, Jackson County, um, proposed regulations. On, uh, the Shawnee County, it shows a five hundred foot setback from any existing, uh, residents. Jackson County shows one thousand three hundred twenty feet, which is a quarter of a mile. And I've heard that even a mile or more is much more safe. And then, um, from the non-participating property line, um, Shawnee County shows fifty foot and, um, Jackson County has a minimum of three hundred foot. So what a concern is, um, you know, if we had a fire, how would you feel if you, if the fire was a blazing fire that was really kind of in a thermal runway type of situation where it was just going and going and going? I, I would feel very uncomfortable living that close, either for my property line or my residence. I mean, that fire could travel very, very quickly and, um, it would be, be a real concern. So, um, another thing that you might want to think about, I'm sorry, can I be just a little quick here?
You have thirty seconds.
Okay. Um, to have a cash deposit for damages to neighbors, like say for fire or, um, say maybe, uh, damage from a storm that blows things over onto neighboring property. Um, and then just another, uh, quote here. On Truth Social, um, August fifteenth of twenty twenty-five, our president, Donald J. Trump, said that wind and solar are the biggest scam of the century. So I'm hoping that you all would be able to consider, um, either continuing the moratorium or putting a ban on it at this time. So I thank you very much for listening.
Anyone else have a question or a comment to make?
Yeah, it's a simple one. Is there a web, what's the website address for us to send you comments?
Um, if you want to send us emails to planning@snco.us. Yeah, that's our, our general email address. Planning@S as in Sam, N as in Nancy, C as in Cat, O as in Oscar, dot U S. Any comments or questions from you guys?
I want to thank you guys. I like the dialogue. It's much better than this coming up and saying something and sitting down. I really, really appreciate that. This is the first time that this is superb for me and, and I've been in a lot of different meetings. This is the way it should be. Thank you so much for that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Uh, staff, next step?
So I, what I will say is I had mentioned that there had been some proposed concerns or changes from various entities. A couple of those I'll point out, um, from our Public Works Department, they had inquired or asked that I more specifically state what the floodplain means. Um, I did put in there the special hazard, special flood hazard area, um, including all mapped floodplain, floodway. In Shawnee County, we have several layer, several, several divisions of what floodplain is. One of those is the point two percent chance, which is like really quite nonexistent to have that area flood. Um, we allow buildings to go up in that area. We don't consider that a restriction under our, um, floodplain regulations. And so buildings can go up, homes can go up in that area. And so in my mind, that point two percent chance area would be allowed to have solar. Uh, I'm looking more at the, the more restricted blue, purple, AE, um, and other zones. And so.
What color is the point two on that map?
Gray is what we show. Um, so we show blue really encompasses all the floodplain, no matter if, what division it falls under. Gray then falls out of that and is the, the lowest side. Purple is the floodway, which is the most restricted. Um, also, our floodplain maps will be changing in the next few years. Uh, they've got proposed changes out there already, but I don't anticipate that those will be put into place for a while. And so I don't want to specify areas. I just, you know, I can maybe a little more specifically list the zones. So I can do that. Um, one of the fire districts was concerned about um, having enough setback between panels that they could get an apparatus in between. And so I will look at what specifically he recommended and we may have to talk with multiple fire districts to see if it's all pretty similar. But what they were concerned about was if there was a fire, whether or not they would be able to get their trucks in, in between the solar panel rows.
Which district was that?
Uh, Shawnee Heights. Yeah. Um, one of the other comments came from a fire district. They were concerned about the state law that grants an exemption for property tax. Um, in particular, each, so our fire districts are all their own taxing district, their own tax entity. And so they receive their funding from property tax. And if that's been waived, then they don't receive, uh, that tax money to support their department. And his concern was that these could be scenarios where they would be providing pretty significant services to a property and to an owner who's not paying any taxes. Our payment in lieu of taxes, um, line item addresses that. We don't really want to put a specific requirement of how much it is or when it has to be paid, if it has to be paid. I think the way that we have it in there is really better in the grand scheme of things because it should be looked at on a case-by-case basis. And so I'll look at that language again, just to make sure that we don't need to enhance it a little bit more to make sure that it's recognized that while we, we do think that pilots are a good idea, um, to help support those, it may have to consider what taxing entities and how they may be harmed specifically.
Can we direct a pilot at more than one, two, more than one tax authority?
Well, so it doesn't, here, we don't specify. And so what we have to recognize is that. And so what we have to recognize is that a pilot shouldn't come to just Shawnee County. It needs to go to those different taxing entities. So we should identify that there are other taxing entities and that any pilot needs to go to each of the ones in that area. Yeah. I've heard both ways, you know, two hundred and forty acres is too many acres. They want to keep it smaller. Then obviously we hear people say that they would like it bigger. So I, you know, I think that we chose the two hundred, well, you guys chose, I didn't choose, but two hundred and forty acres for a specific purpose. Um, and then again, pointing out the fact that there is the clause that allows the Board of County Commissioners to make some changes to that if necessary or if requested. I feel like those were the main topics that came up, but. Um, so next steps, uh, I will probably want to make a few changes based on things that we've heard and have you guys consider that at our public hearing. I, I think that the, the draft as it is, is, it is what it is. I think that the next time you guys consider this needs to be at a public hearing. What I'm anticipating, we do have some meetings scheduled for November that are already going to be kind of heavy and so I don't think that we should do it in November. Do we have anything tentatively scheduled for December yet?
Not yet, but I'm expecting that we're going to get.
We're going to get one. Our deadline for the December meeting is not for a couple of weeks yet and so um, Horeem has already been working with someone who she thinks will file. I was thinking maybe December, but maybe not until January, um, to go ahead and do a public hearing for the solar regulations. We don't really, you know, obviously we did it at Greater Overland Station for the wind solar. I don't know what kind of response we would have in terms of the public showing up. We may just.
Will that be advertised any different than this was?
Yes, absolutely. So a public hearing for regulations has to be published in the paper. I would do some media work probably. Yeah, and posting it on the website. Sending out, we sent out an email to everybody who had requested notification about solar. Um, we would do that again. We did not publish it in the paper just because, you know, we're not required to and we felt like we were reaching out to the people who were really interested in in communicating. And we knew that people who were going to be here are in communication with other people who are interested and so that, you know, the word would get around.
One thing I am curious about, and I don't know if we just ask our own insurance people, but to find out if properties that are close to, uh, to the solar panels, do the properties get dropped from their insurance? How, I, I would be curious about that, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want to reach out to, anybody who would like to reach out to their insurance and ask that question, I'm sure each insurance agent is going to be a little bit different, but if that's going to make an effect on the cost, yeah. If a larger, if, if, if a specific setback is, helps.
Okay. I will check that out because that could be a problem.
Yeah.
Quick question back on the first gentleman's comment about maintenance on there. Are there already other regulations like in terms of maintaining the property, keeping it mowed, keeping it, well, after, did we need to put that specifically in here?
So we could add something about maintaining and keeping it mowed. Part of it with the solar farms is that they're request, requested to have native grasses and flowers and such to go on those properties, which then in essence means that they're not going out and mowing them and maintaining them. If it's creating site distance issues or if it's inviting varmin, I think that we can look at it. We do have nuisance regulations in regards to tall grass, but it only applies to parcels under. Yeah, a certain size. So I don't know that there really needs to be because, again, typically you're wanting to encourage wildlife and flowers and grasses to grow, as long as it's not just turning into a big weed patch. Which is why I suggested that he reach out and have us look at that. I don't remember, I'd have to look back at our regulations or the, the solar farm that we approved, whether there's anything specific in there about the maintenance.
Or maybe there's some middle ground between the native grass, but also lowering the fire risk. I mean, if the, the grass is allowed to grow wild around there and there is a fire, I mean, it's, you know, who's burnt pasture knows that? That can really move quickly.
Okay.
And can you remind me, um, when you did have the larger meeting and you had the meteorologists come in and was that just for solar?
Just wind. The meteorologist was looking specifically at how wind turbines affect. I, we haven't had he, his, his focus was on wind. We haven't had anybody bring up the topic of how solar panels could impact weather or radar.
I think his focus was on the radar implication.
Yeah, that's exactly. He's wanting to be able to see tornadoes coming through. And the way that the wind turbines can spin, it can create these false images or hide the images is what he was finding.
So there wasn't any, any large discussion then on the solar panels with in cause and effect with weather at that time? Okay, that was like a long time ago, so I'm glad you remember because I certainly could not. So is that something that we should consider? I mean, that we would want someone to come in or no?
If, I mean, I think that the, the problem is, is, is there someone who has enough information and research to be able to identify that is a cause or a concern and be able to have someone to come speak about it?
I mean, I can do some research, but.
Yeah.
Yes.
It feels like somebody will probably be able to come in and speak the adverse of whatever.
Right, that's why I'm like, uh, and, and you'll think a little bit more about the platted subdivisions.
Yeah, so one of the, um, prior to the meeting starting, Jeanette brought up that on the setbacks with where we talk about a setback of five hundred feet, it's from an existing residence or one that's already being built. And she was asking whether we should have a setback from platted or under undeveloped, not underdeveloped, but undeveloped subdivisions. Where maybe that subdivision has already been planned out, but hasn't begun construction. Um, and so we can talk about that more. You guys can discuss that as a whole. I can create some language. My concern with it is in Shawnee County, we do have a large number of subdivisions that have never been developed that could at any point in time be developed and I guess you know, that land could be used for a solar farm in and of itself. You know, it could be that it's good land for a solar farm. Um, but also, you know, the, the concept typically is if you're aware when the solar farm is there and you haven't built your house yet, you, you know, when you come in. Now, the, the counter argument to that is are we preventing someone from being able to market and rightfully develop land that they'd already planned to develop? And, um, I think it could go either way, um, you know. Anybody can argue that it's preventing them from developing the land next door, whether it's platted or not. But I do think that there's something to look at to see.
Different if it's unapproved flat.
Yeah.
One other thing, sorry. Popping my head as I was digging back through my notes here. I, I think we probably should look into changing the wording on number nine about, um, that's the storage of uh, the components and damaged items. I think when I was recently thinking about it and we were talking about it, it was the key to from becoming a junk heap and throwing broken panels there. But, um, the gentleman had a good point that, um, if you're out there doing routine maintenance like we want to encourage them to do, if they had a little storage shed, they had.
Right, and so the intent of that is not that if they, I, this is just open parts and junk and broken stuff laying around. It's not to encompass if they have a storage building because you can't have a pertinent facilities within a project area. So we can clean up the language just to clarify that unhoused or open, just stuff laying around. It needs to be in an enclosed, uh, facility, a pertinent facility. And that's why sometimes when we craft this language, we think of it a certain way. We don't think about what the counter argument could be and so you know, if you read it black and white, then yeah, it says you can't have it even if it were inside of a building. So, yeah, absolutely. It's exactly why we have these town hall meetings to take things that we didn't think about.
The context of discussion and they get to read them cold.
Well, if there isn't any further business or any other questions, then we'll, uh, close the meeting. We thank you all for coming and sharing your thoughts and do we need a motion to adjourn?
Nope.
All right.
Thank you very much, Phil.